Welcome to the forum for candidates in the 2024 general election for Andover City Council at Large. The forum is being recorded by QCTV for multiple showings. Thank you, QCTV. Editing is only authorized for official media reporting excerpts. Edited clips of candidates' forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. Meet the Candidate forums are held without a live audience and voters' questions were submitted online for the candidates. I'm Susan Witt, the forum moderator and member of League of Women Voters Anoka, Blaine, and Coon Rapids area. The sponsor of this forum. I live in Blaine, so I can't vote for any of these candidates. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. I'm sure these candidates care very much who you vote for, but the League does not. The League does hope that each of you will vote. The goal of this forum is to help citizens become informed voters. The candidates for Andover City Council at Large are Greg Mueller, Scott Schue, Jonathan Shafto, and Jeff Sims. You will be electing two candidates. All candidates for this race were invited to participate in the forum. All candidates agreed to participate except Greg Mueller, who is out of town for work. I will be reading an opening and closing statement which he was allowed to submit. Welcome to Andover City Council at Large candidates, Scott Schue, Jonathan Shafto, and Jeff Sims. In lieu of opening statements, we will begin with two questions which were provided to the candidates in advance. This will be followed by questions from the public that were submitted in advance. Candidates will rotate answering first. We will end with closing statements from each candidate. We will begin the opening statement first with Jonathan Shafto. And the first question that you are limited to 90 seconds to respond is what is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and giving residents an opportunity to learn about all the candidates. A little bit about me, I'm Jonathan Shafto. I've been married 16 years, I have three children, and have lived in Andover for nearly a decade. From a professional experience standpoint, I am a CPA with over a decade of financial experience. I currently work in the farm credit system, supporting farmers across the country. I lead a team that provides financial reporting services, budget analysis, project management, and data analytics. From a civics experience standpoint, I am currently serving on the Andover Planning and Zoning Commission. I am the president of the Andover Athletic Association, former director of the Youth Cross Country Program, and I'm a frequent volunteer coach for youth sports. This leads me to what is motivating me to run. My professional skill set is what the city needs right now. Our city is facing tough budget constraints due to major infrastructure projects and inflation. My finance background and leadership experience are well suited to address these challenges. A second motivating factor is to assist the city in their review of the fire and EMS study, which is scheduled for release in January. My, uh, the results of this study need to be reviewed in detail to ensure our first responders get the support they deserve in the now and in the future. In summary, my combination of deep professional budget and finance expertise and community leadership experience will allow me to effectively serve Andover in this role. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Sims, what is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Thank you. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I think it's a great opportunity for the citizens to hear directly from the candidates. A quick little bit about me, I grew up on a farm, 300 acre, 300 acre farm near Wilmer, about two hours west of here. In 2006, after eight years in New Hope, I was restless and looking for a little more space and a small-town feel. My wife and I discovered Andover, and we found a home that we both loved and moved here with our young children. We've had a great experience over the last 18 years raising our children and creating many friendships. I enjoy the fact that I can go to a festival, Target, or Quick Trip and run into someone I know. As to why I chose to run, back in 2014, we had some land near us that was a public hearing and was set up to be expanded, so we went to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and gathered up the neighbors and heard what the developer had to say. We didn't care for what the developer had to say, so we got a petition together, filled the room with local neighbors, and the Planning and Zoning Commission vetoed and said no to the developer. Shortly after, the city council at that point overruled the Planning and Zoning Commission and went ahead with the developer takeaway. So my motivation to run for city council is to have more of a voice and be able to have an official vote on planning issues for Andover's future.
Thank you. And we'll, Scott Schue, what is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would you help, use to help serve effectively?
And like my compatriots over here, I also want to thank QCTV and the League of Women Voters for hosting this. I was asked by several people to consider running for the Andover City Council, and after much reflection and prayer, I decided it was time for me to step up and serve my community that I call home. I have both public and private sector leadership experience. I served nearly 24 years in the military in various leadership roles, both as an enlisted Army paratrooper and as an Air Force intelligence officer. I had multiple combat tours of duty in the Middle East. My last military position, I was the Director of Intelligence and Security for the Minnesota Army and Air National Guard. In the private sector, I was an executive at the corporate level. I've also owned my own business, and I've run small businesses. And most recently, I worked for a nonprofit as a manager of the Veterans Corps for the Conservation Corps of Minnesota and Iowa. I have lived in Andover for 24 years, I've raised my four children here, and I want others to enjoy the benefits of our wonderful community. I believe I can bring my strategic planning and leadership experience to our community in a way that is responsive to and representative of the citizens of Andover. It is important to have someone on the council who is business-minded, that hasn't been part of a previous commission or the council, in order to bring outside and fresh perspectives. I am seeking your vote in order to serve the needs of the citizens of Andover. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now read Greg Mueller's statement that he had submitted. After living in Andover since 1997 and raising a family, I feel that it is time to give something back to the community. I have learned a great deal about Andover over the past three years as an at-large member of the Economic Development Authority. This experience has also enabled me to gain an understanding of what is working well and what requires improvement. With 38 years in expanded leadership roles in a growing company and industry, I have taken pride in executing consistently and delivering value for our customers. I will take this same passion to the Andover City Council. All work must be focused and must be executed with a purpose. In addition to my public and professional experience, I have served on several nonprofit boards over the past 20 years, and I'm currently the vice president of a local college foundation board. I have learned the importance of serving others with honesty, transparency, and accountability. And I will continue with Greg's statement about what are his goals for Andover's future. My goals for Andover will be summed up in a handful of words: lower property taxes, public safety, expanded private investment, and accountable leadership. All spending should be prudent and necessary. It is critical that the city council is a good steward of the taxpayers' money. In expanding private tax base will also enable lower property taxes. No city can be prosperous unless it is safe. Maintaining the existing relationship with the Anoka County Sheriff's Office will always be a priority. Supporting private investment will support the needs of the residents as the city continues to grow. Amenities are in demand and must be delivered with a purposeful timeline that will have an impact. The amenities in the city must scale with the expanded population. Finally, leadership requires both transparency and accountability. A city council member must be able to look backwards at the end of their term and list their many accomplishments. This is an embodiment of my Leadership with a Purpose campaign. We will now go on to that second part of the opening, which is the what are your goals for Andover's future? And we will begin with Jeff Sims.
Thank you. So my vision for Andover is Andover is a unique city. Anybody that lives in Andover made the choice to move here. We've got a combination of neighborhood-centric and open space. The open space is what attracted me. If I get a chance to serve the citizens of Andover, I've got a vision of a strategic urban plan that looks at what does Andover look like in one year, five years, 10 years? What's the population, what's the infrastructure needs? I think what we have is a comp plan, but we don't have a what does that look like? So I think the councils of the past have made decisions in a silo, so in my mind, we need to have that strategic plan. Along with that, a housing development approach that supports that plan. So the idea of we're going to have 1,000 more people in Andover in 10 years, what does that look like from a housing standpoint? And that also then ties into the budget, and I want a consistent budget because I think people are okay paying their fair share of the taxes as long as they can plan and make sure that it's consistent year over year to what that looks like. Along with that is also the safety and security, making sure that the, as the strategic plan grows, if you're going to have increased population, you may need increased fire, you may need increased expenses with the sheriff department and what that looks like. So all of that needs to be driven by that initial strategic plan of what do we want Andover to look like. Another goal of mine is a proactive economic development approach. I think the city can have a bigger voice in attracting new business to Andover. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Schue, what are your goals for Andover's future?
Yes, thank you. First off, you can go to my website to see a lot more detail on what I'm going to tell you because we have all of one minute to get this all out. So my website, just so you know, is schueforandover.com. That's S-C-H-U-E, the number four, andover.com. My primary ones here that I really want to let you know about is public safety, fiscal responsibility, transparency, both from the government standpoint as well as elections, sensible infrastructure, economic development, and natural resource conservation. So I'm just trying to tackle that first one in the remaining few seconds that I have. So public safety encompasses a lot to do with our first responders. I have a personal experience with the sheriff's department coming over to my own home and having to experience a death in my family where those poor law enforcement officers had to show up and be super respectful, super compassionate, super kind. But they have to deal with trauma on a day-in, day-out basis. We need to show our support for first responders, we need to give them the backing of the entire community, we need to be there for them. But it goes beyond just the first responders. We also have water safety and things like that, roads, schools, things that we really need to focus on. But again, go to my website and you can get more details on these. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Shafto, what are your goals for Andover's future?
Thank you. I have three main goals that support an overall vision to keep Andover as a desirable place to live and raise a family. Goal one, creating a healthy annual city budgets. Well, maybe not the most exciting goal, it is one of the most important roles in city government. To effectively manage the budget, we need strategic planning of current and future costs to keep property taxes at low, consistent, and manageable levels for our residents. I will dive deep into the budget, offer professional insights to fellow council members and city staff, and ensure that our dollars are utilized judiciously. My second goal is to support public safety by maintaining a strong, trust-based relationship with the Anoka Sheriff's Office and ensuring our firefighter and EMS staff have the support and tools they need to serve Andover residents now and in the future. My third goal is to preserve Andover's character on what made a lot of us move here in the first place. I've met a lot of residents who chose Andover for the strong schools, great parks and preserves, the unique blend of urban conveniences and rural charm. To do this, the city council must be intentional and strategic on future developments, ensuring it benefits all residents. I intend to support this vision and these goals by drawing upon my leadership experience and financial expertise. By doing these foundational pieces correctly, we'll create a community where everyone feels safe, supported, and proud to live in Andover. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now ask candidates to respond to questions submitted online by the public. Responses are limited to one minute. We will begin with Jeff Schue. What are two things? Are you saying Scott Schue? Scott, I'm sorry, Scott Schue. What are two things Andover is currently doing well and what are two areas for improvement?
So I think Andover does many things well, and I think it'd be easy for us to cast stones at the current existing council, but as I've gotten a little bit better on researching with them, they are doing some, a five-year plan that takes a good look at where we need to be. They are budgeting from a government standpoint, not like a business would. They have reshuffled the deck when it comes to the finances. So I think they're, they're doing a fairly good job, but at the same time, the two areas that I think that they really need to handle is when you're figuring out ways to do the finances, you need to come up a little bit better on taking care of the taxpayers' money. The second part is the roads and the bridges. They need to do a better job there. They have a plan, but it still falls short of what the Andover residents really need. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Shafto, what are two things that Andover is currently doing well and what are two areas for improvement?
Yeah, thank you. Two things I think the current council does well is they do a great job of having civil discussions, and I've appreciated that even though they may have different opinions on things, I've attended many city council meetings and watched many of them. We do a good job of actually having proper discourse and making sure everybody's heard and trying to come up with the best decision. I think two major areas I think of improvement, and Scott kind of mentioned, one, I think keeping up on road infrastructure. There, I believe it was just like one to two miles of road that was being repaired and replaced, and now we got to do it all at once. And they're about to pass a levy to do that, and we're, and we're trying to catch up on all this road repair and all this road construction, and it could have been better planned out. The other piece is to be more transparent. I think that everybody knows about the community center, and that's a good example of something that was more of a want than a need, maybe should have been done as a referendum. But the big thing there was just that if we would have looked at the roads better, we could have spent that money on roads rather than the community center, and if that got communicated better to the citizens, we could have made a more educated decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Sims, what are, how, what are two things that Andover is currently doing well that are areas, and what are two areas for improvement?
Yeah, I'd agree with Jonathan. The, I know a couple of council members from my time on the Planning Commission and the way they work together to work through problems, and I've been to a couple of city council meetings and walked through the dialogue they have with each other. I think that's really encouraging. A year about other cities where there's, there's challenges of getting anything done and the fact that we, our city council's working well together, and I think that's, I think any of the candidates up here, goal would be to work with the existing council members and whoever gets elected to have a good discourse and really care about the, solving the problems of, of Andover. The biggest area, and I think I mentioned in my opening statements, I, I don't think we have a solid strategic plan to follow that says, hey, what does five years, 10 years look like? And we would have been able to address some of the issues around the budget if we had that solid plan in place, and so that's what I would like to see, is a better strategic plan to deal with future, future issues.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Jonathan Shafto, and it's how would you go about seeking input from the community and how would you use that input in setting policies and direction for Andover?
Thank you. I think this is a very important question because ultimately, we're representing the residents of Andover and we're serving them. So seeking their input is very important. Now, there's a number of ways we can do that. One of those ways is to make sure everybody is aware of your email address, and I know the city posts so, so encouraging citizens to email your city councilors and your mayor what your opinion is. Emailing the city, because the city does do a good job of gathering up all of the feedback they get from citizens and communicating it to city council, and I'm currently on the Planning and Zoning Commission. They always tell us what the feedback they're getting from citizens is, and it's incredibly helpful to make good decisions. We may have an idea in our head of how it should be, but you can't know everything, right? There are gaps in your own knowledge, so having the ability to hear from citizens, whether it be email, whether it be showing up to the city council meetings and making your voice heard, or even picking up the phone and calling a city councillor, or those are ways that, that could be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Sims, how would you go about seeking input from the community and how would you use that input in setting policies and directions for Andover?
Thank you. I think that's an important question. I think that's the, the thing that I saw in Planning and Zoning is we didn't necessarily have the, the best interest of the citizens in play. Things like Andover Fun Fest, having council members and commission members at the Fun Fest is a great way to get live feedback. I did some of that when I was on Planning Commission. It was good to get that face time with the people. I think another area that's untapped is potentially the social media and having some presence from the city in social media to attract some of the younger people and get their ideas of what the future, future things look like. I personally am not a social media expert, so I would, I would look at the city council to investigate what that would look like so we could reach, reach a wider audience, especially of the young people that get their news from social media more than anyplace else. So I think that'd be my two, two areas that I would look at.
Okay, thank you. Scott Schue, how would you go about seeking input from the community and how would you use that input for, to setting policies and directions for Andover?
So both Jonathan and Jeff actually have, have done a nice job of saying, hey, let's do some of this stuff, and I would agree with them. But in addition to that, I think an occasional town hall is not a bad idea, separate from, you know, the, the city council meetings, the workshops, all that stuff, but having a separate chance to go ahead and, and talk to the people. Also, the old open door policy, the idea of you can call me, first try to go through the city, but you can always call me, and I will be happy to actively listen to what you have to say.
Thank you. The next question is, we will begin with Jeff Sims. As city, a city council member, how will you work with and utilize the views and recommendations of our commissions?
Yeah, as a former Planning and Zoning Commission member that was frustrated that the city council didn't listen to us when we were on Planning and Zoning because we, we put in a lot of work and spent a lot of effort thoughtfully thinking through things, I have a soft spot for listening to all the people that take their time and, and work on the different commissions. So I would meet with, and I know all of those sessions are recorded, so I would take the time to re-watch those sessions before we actually get to the city council, take their feedback, get that live feedback. A lot of times, those have the citizens showing up at public hearings and that type of thing. So I think that would be important to hear directly from the people that come to those meetings, so they're the ones that are, have an interest in the topic at hand. So I think that's the, watching those meetings, and if it's a, if it's a bigger issue, actually attending in person if, if appropriate. So that's how I would approach it.
Thank you. Scott Schue, as a city council member, how would you work with and utilize the views and recommendations of our city commission?
First off, I'd, I'd like to agree with Jeff on how he approached that. I've talked to several people that have participated as commission members, and they had the same kind of frustration that they spent a lot of time and effort and they were dismissed. Now, I get that the city council gets to make the final decision, but ultimately, it's the citizens of Andover that really do. And so I would like to see that we get to participate more with those active commissions and hear their input, find out what they've, they're really doing and understand it better. But at the same time, the city council has limited time to focus on some of these issues. But if you get citizens who are willing to put the time and effort, we really do need to actively listen to what they have to say and probably, but not always, defer to what they recommend.
Thank you. Jonathan Shafto, as a city council member, how would you work with and utilize the views and recommendations of our city commission?
Yeah, thank you. Being on the Planning and Zoning Commission right now, I know I've been, it's always good to hear when you watch the city council meeting to have them kind of reference that they watched it, that they took your advice, but knowing that, yeah, city council has the ultimate say because they are the ones who were voted in to office. But I think one of the areas that I think we could do better is when you're a commissioner, you get these big packs that you read beforehand and you like think about how you're going to vote, and then you hear the public input, and then you kind of vote from there. But where I think we need to challenge commission members is to make their opinions known in the meeting so that, so that city council members can actually hear their fully thought-out opinion. Because a lot of times, they already did that at home. They had that opinion, but they didn't express it well enough at home. So I think challenging commission members to just give their opinion at the commission meeting so that city councilors can take that in. And then also, I agree, attending the meetings would be a great idea and making sure to watch them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Scott Schue. And, yeah. How would you balance the demands of the position of city council with your personal and professional commitments?
That's a great question, and because I've always done more than one thing at any given time. I was part of the National Guard while I was working for corporate America. I get that you, you have a lot of things, plus you have your family. And I, I certainly believe that God, family, and country come, come in that order, but this is a civic duty that is part of the country category. And I think that when you, you do this, you do it in partnership with the people that are your friends and family, and they will help you to be able to maintain that balance. You've got to attend a certain number of these meetings. You still have obligations to your family, you have obligations to the community, and we all have that issue of trying to balance that. I'm not too worried about it. My wife is a, now a retired Full Bird Colonel, and she knows how to do things, so she can help me on that side, and I will take care of the rest.
Thank you. Jonathan Shafto, how would you balance the demands of the position of city council with your personal and professional commitments?
Yeah, it's a great question, and you know, I, I think a big piece of it is planning and, you know, communicating. I'm, I'm married, I have three kids, one's in high school, one's in middle school, one's in elementary. There's a lot going on. That said, if you plan correctly, you can time everything out appropriately. Now, I worked in public accounting for many years for PWC, and I would do hundred-hour weeks at times. I'm used to hard work. I grew up on a dairy farm. I, I've been working hard my whole life. I actually, kind of like Scott, can't sit still. I need to constantly be doing something. Right now, I'm the president of Andover Athletic Association. I got a full-time job, but I like serving my community. That's a core value of mine, and I think the most important thing, though, is I need to lead by example. If I want my children to be involved in the community, if I want them to also be out there helping people in the community, I need to do that myself. So that's a big motivator for me, and it never gets tiring, it never gets boring, and I, I hope that I can continue to do that in city council, and even if I don't win, I'll continue to do that no matter what. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Sims, how would you balance the demands of the position of city council with your personal or professional commitments?
I recently became empty nester here in the last two years, so the easy answer is I've had this idea of running for council for years, but didn't- I've had this idea of running for council for years, but didn't have the bandwidth at the time. So with both kids out the door, it gives me more freedom to do that. I did run my own business for 10 years and balanced that when I was busy with the kids, so I feel confident that I'll have time to take care of the needs of the role at city council and look forward to the chance to do that.
Thank you. Let's see, the next question, we will begin with Jonathan Shafto. And it is, what would you do to make Andover a welcoming and inclusive community?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing you can do, and this is what I try to do, is lead by example. I volunteer as much as I can, and when you lead by example, other people will follow. I mean, I have a personal friend in the community who volunteers for everything, and she inspired me to like, I'm not doing enough, I'll keep doing more. So I volunteered at school events, I volunteered at a lot of different, Andover Athletic, coaching, just helping out. And so other areas, like the city can do it, is really Family Fun Fest is a great event for all of our families, and, you know, creating an open and accepting atmosphere there and creating a sense of community. Because when you have that sense of community, and it allows everybody to want to be more involved and want to help their community. So that would be the main focus there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Sims, what would you do to make Andover a welcoming and inclusive community?
I think two different levels. I think on a personal level, I think it's everybody getting to know your neighbors, getting to know everybody in the neighborhood. The term Minnesota Nice is out there. Sometimes people get tied up with their own family, but I think there's an opportunity to reach out to your neighbors. I know we went to the Neighborhood Night Out back in August and got to know a bunch of my neighbors, so that was a good time to be inclusive and understand what the neighbors are interested in and doing. That was actually part of my motivation to go ahead and run, was to hear from the neighbors and different topics that we were looking at. The other one I would do, I would steal Scott's idea of having a town hall and inviting people to come, not as an official get-together, but a, come share your thoughts with the city council, hold it at the city council, so people can feel free to come and share what they're thinking and what they would do. So that would be my thoughts.
Thank you. Scott Schuh, what would you do to make Andover a welcoming and inclusive community?
Well, I do think it starts at the neighborhoods. You know, whether that's the neighborhood itself, just having a neighborhood party, whether it's a National Night Out kind of thing. But it goes beyond that, and whether it's the town hall kind of scenario, or whether it's the activity center. When we have the community center that is kind of that fundamental core place that was of concern for the residents here about six years ago, when the process was flawed in how the second rank was authorized, we, nonetheless, we have a fantastic facility there. We need to make that more of the central part of our community. We need to do more things to involve all the citizens there.
Thank you. This next question is rather lengthy, and actually has kind of an introductory paragraph. So it is about programming such as we're doing right now. QCTV provides community news and information, live sports coverage, live government meetings with closed captioning, religious programming, community event shows, business highlights, and election programming like this candidate forum. Cable TV franchising and related fees to use the public use of right away by cable providers such as Comcast have a 50-year history in Minnesota, assuring digital equity. Full build-out, service standards, and dedicated funding for public programming. Last legislative session, the Equitable Access to Broadband Act was introduced to provide for the same goals for broadband digital equity, as an opt-in for cities wanting to franchise broadband providers. Would you support this legislation and the work done by QCTV? And we will begin with Jeff Sims.
That's a heck of a question. I'll be honest and say I would need to dig in and understand it more. I would be in favor of anything that gets, I mean, broadband has become, Wi-Fi is everywhere, almost it's right on par with electricity and water, and it's hard to live without Wi-Fi these days. So if there's an avenue that the city, if the city has a role in trying to ensure that everybody has access to Wi-Fi, I'd be interested in looking at that and seeing what that entails. But I don't want to answer something that I don't fully understand the backstory of the legislature and what that looks like. But I do think it's important that everybody has access to Wi-Fi, and like I said, what role the city has in that, I'd be interested in investigating.
Thank you. Scott Schuh, do you need me to read any, I could read just part of it? Okay.
Long, but I think I got the gist.
It's in 90 seconds.
Okay, thank you. So Jeff, you're spot on. I think I would also need to do additional research, but the way I understand the issue here is, it's really cable versus streaming. How do you make sure this stuff is happening? How do you ensure that public TV has the access to, you know, houses, residents that cut the cable, and they have the Wi-Fi, the streaming services coming in? So how do you make that equitable? I am a fan of public TV. I think it's important that everybody can have that access. But I would have to dig into the details to better understand what that actual act says and does. But I'm okay with the idea of making sure households have that. How we do that, that's the more challenging issue.
Thank you. Jonathan Shafto? Do you need me to read?
No, I don't think so. I think I got it. And, you know, honestly, I'll probably echo a lot what was said already. I'm not one to jump to conclusions. I strongly believe in doing your research before you make a decision. I am not an expert on this piece of legislation, so I'd have to go back and research. I mean, in general, I'm also a supporter of public TV and QCTV. I really appreciate that they do the local programming and they have that option. And, you know, digital equity is an important issue. I think the big piece for us to consider, though, is kind of exactly what Jeff's said is, what role does the city have to play in that? And a lot of that's going to figure out, what does the legislation say? And then working with the state to figure out what role the city plays. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Scott Schuh. What programs and/or services would you like to see implemented or changed for the youth of Andover?
So I think that there are things that are already in place. I mean, Jonathan heads up the Athletic Association, and so there's some fantastic, different pieces that are already out there. However, I think we're missing some things that I think we could do better. I think the arts is an area that I think Andover doesn't focus a lot of effort into. I happen to participate in the Northern Stars Center for the Performing Arts. My family does a lot of things there. They bring some wonderful shows, to include shows that focus on people with special needs. And I think that we could partner with, even if we don't have our own theater, we could push more of that information out there to our citizens, so that they could participate in these things in adjacent towns if we needed to, but maybe we can bring them to Andover as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Shafto, what programs and/or services would you like to see implemented or changed for the youth of Andover?
Yeah, this is a great question, and you know, as Scott mentioned, there are a lot of great organizations already here. Now, one challenge can be, and we face this all the time at Andover Athletic Association, which I'm president of, is the cost for some residents can be a major barrier. And we've tried to figure out, can we offer scholarships? Can we help some individuals who can't quite afford all the different youth activities? Now, we do offer a lot of low-cost activities, like cross-country, but that's not for everybody. And you know, I'm a CPA, I'm an accountant, I'm big into the budget and figuring all that out. I'll be honest, I don't have the best ideas, but that's where I would ask for resident input. I'm very open to hearing ideas, and I think they probably have better ideas than I could come up with myself. So encouraging them to email me as a council, or just in general, I'd be very much in favor in exploring different ideas, whether it be like a local volunteer corps or something like that, I think would be a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Sims, what programs and/or services would you like to see implemented or changed for the youth of Andover?
Yeah, I'm going to maybe have a different spin on this, because I think, to the extent the city, what's the city role in youth? There's a lot of programs already out there that are independent and do their own thing. They use city facilities in times, so I think there's a role where the facilities could come into play. But I think, so in terms of supporting the facilities and what that looks like, I think there's a role. But in terms of individual, the city getting involved in trying to support and/or fund anything along the lines of additional youth sports, I don't think it's the best use of city resources. So that's where my stance would be, work with them if there's city facilities that make sense to use, but I wouldn't necessarily endorse any sort of city funds going to help youth sports, because I think there's plenty of other opportunities out there to try to make that happen in other avenues, so.
Thank you. The next question, we will begin with Jonathan Shafto. And that is, how will you support Andover's senior citizen population? And what amenities would you add to keep seniors here and involved in the community?
That's a great question. I was actually just at a senior living facility at Arbor Oaks this past week and got the pleasure to talk to a number of residents there, and that it's an excellent facility and already offers great services. I think for something like this, it is going to require a lot of research, and I think the biggest issue that Andover might have is, we don't have a lot of space for this kind of, for a lot of additional services. Now, there's a new service that just went up near Anoka High School across the road there for senior citizens, and I think we just would need to do more research on that and figure out, and get input again from citizens on how they would like to see it. And I think that would probably be the best approach. And again, you know, we talked about town hall, which I think is an excellent idea. Those would be the type of forums where we could kind of figure this stuff out. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Sims, how will you support Andover's senior citizen population? And what amenities would you add to keep seniors here and engaged in the community?
Yeah, so to me, I mentioned earlier, the strategic plan of what we think the future looks like, and if there's a vision of having additional population, a population of seniors as we're thinking about different properties and developers coming in. And I know we've had some additional senior housing that's gone into place over the last few years. So I would encourage that type of development, would be very a fan of that. The second one I would do is, I think one of the biggest challenges, I know my mom's a senior right now, and transportation or getting around from the doctor's appointment, especially in bad weather and that type of thing is a challenge. So if there's a way for the city to work, I know Anoka County has some different transportation services, so just working alongside Anoka County to see if we can offer additional, without public transportation in Andover, is our way to work with Anoka County, to see if we have different rides that we can set up and help coordinate through the city to help seniors be able to get to and from different appointments.
Thank you. The, well, the next question will begin with, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I do have a blank square here, Scott, I'm sorry. Scott, how would you support the citizen, the senior citizen population?
Well, depending on how you characterize a senior citizen, if it's 55-plus, there's a big range here of things. I would actually qualify in that if we did that. And so I think the city council right now is looking at some different new space and new facilities that, we're talking about private development, and when you do private development, you can encourage them to go ahead, and for instance, they can build a pickleball court. They can do these things. It doesn't always have to be the city that does this, but the city can encourage others to help with some of that stuff. And so I like, Jeff, what you said about transportation, that is an issue, but I'm a fiscal hawk, and so when I look at that, I'm like, okay, how do we figure it out with the county, so that the county goes ahead and helps with that, and the city isn't always on the fiscal hook for different services that we have to add?
Thank you. The next question, we will begin with Jeff Sims, and that is, what are your ideas to increase city revenues and/or decrease city expenses?
I think the, I can address the decreasing revenue, because that's an easier one in terms of looking at existing expenses. I think from a, I wouldn't be a fan of increasing revenue, or that, I would want to evaluate the entire budget and understand what the need is, and then evaluate, is there a need to increase or decrease? You can always look at, how do we reduce expenses? Is all the money being spent, spent on valid, prudent issues that are helping the citizens of Andover? I think my accounting background and my finance background, I can help with that. I can work with the city staff to see, to go with a fine-tooth comb and see where we can cut expenses that way. I wouldn't recommend, I wouldn't talk about raising any revenue until we had a chance to say, is there a need to raise revenue? Because nobody wants to pay more taxes. That being said, like I said, if there's a long-term strategic plan of what is a consistent budget, that people can get used to having that budget in their personal space, would be my approach to doing things.
Thank you. Scott Schuh, what are your ideas to increase city revenue and/or decrease city expenses?
So one of the first things that I think we really need to take a serious look at is the economic development when it comes to businesses. How do we encourage more businesses to come to Andover? What kind of things can we do besides just simply thanking them for being there for all the residents? Because they could choose to do business and be a business operator elsewhere. So we would have to look at that. I think there are other opportunities to increase our revenue. Sometimes, and I hate to say this out loud, but I'm going to do it anyway, sometimes you raise rates at existing facilities a little bit to start offsetting some of the actual costs. So there are some ways to do that. But then, when you're cutting costs, you have to look at different things that we're spending them on. What is it that is a true need? What's a want? What's a desire? We really need to take a serious look at that. And I think that that's going to be an important thing, but I really think businesses, attracting more businesses to Andover is important.
Thank you. Jonathan Shafto, what are your ideas to increase city revenue and/or decrease city expenses?
Yeah, I think you need to start with the expense side of the income statement. You need to kind of more, we've talked about this, having a more long-term strategic planning and leveling out our expenses over the year, so we don't have so many ups and downs. Like currently, there's a new levy going out that's going to raise property taxes up to 12 percent, and that's going to pass, and that's because we had to put in a major infrastructure project in, because we didn't keep up on road repairs. And so I think that's kind of the, where you have to start, is figure out what our current expenses are and level that out, and then you can look at the revenue side. Our primary source of income is property taxes, and we don't want to burden homeowners more than we already have to. And then the other piece is business, incentivizing businesses to come here. We aren't on any state or federal highways, so generally, they're not interested in expanding here, but we can use like discretionary income Andover has to maybe incentivize local entrepreneurship and develop businesses by Andover residents.
Thank you. Next is our next to the last question, and that is, and we will begin with Scott Schuh. What efforts should Andover consider to make the city safe for all residents and visitors?
So I would tell you that I'm a huge fan. So I would tell you that I'm a huge fan of making our community safe, but keeping it safe. We have a fantastic agreement with the Sheriff's Department right now. I would advocate we continue that. We work with sheriff-wise. We support our law enforcement. We show them our support. We don't just say in the background, oh, I'm glad we have law enforcement. We need to actually go to their open house when they have it. We need to go and thank them for what they're doing. So I'm a big fan of that. And I think that it would be important for us to continue the relationship, not just with law enforcement. But as Jonathan had said earlier about the fire department, we're waiting on a study on that. And depending on what that says, well, we might have to take some of that action in with a new council. But when we do, whatever the actions are, we need to still show to our men and women that are firefighters that we care about them, that we want them in our community, and they're important. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Shafto, what efforts should Andover consider to make the city safe for all residents and visitors?
Yeah, I think a lot of what Scott said is true. I mean, the relationship we have with the Anoka Sheriff's Department and that contract has been an extremely valuable partnership for the city. It benefits both sides. It saves us a lot of money from a budget perspective. And you know, with the Sheriff's Department right here in Andover, they do an excellent job already, I think, of monitoring the streets. But I want to focus more on the fire and EMS study. That's going to be a very important study that comes out in January. And we really need to look at that closely to figure out, because right now we have 42, 52 paid-on-call positions for the fire department, but only 42 are filled. We're having retention issues. And we need to figure out why we're having retention issues. Is it morale issues? Is it benefits? What's the real cause there? And then, once we figure that out, we as a council, we need to figure out how do we support it? How do we attract more firefighters? And retain them, most importantly. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Sims, what efforts should Andover consider to make the city safe for all residents and visitors?
Yeah, I guess I would approach it a little bit different. I think we need a data-driven approach in terms of what are our crime statistics? And what do we consider safe? And set a goal of, at the city council level to say, here's what we consider acceptable crime statistics. I know I was looking at the latest sheriff's report, and then I just noticed there was over 1,200 calls to the sheriff's office in a given month. And that seemed awful high to me. And then you start looking through that some of those are traffic incidents and those types of things. So I think having a goal of what, and quantifying what safe is, so that we can then report back to the citizens that if we see those statistics rising, then we as a city council need to do something to address those and go back to our sheriff department and maybe have more resources along those lines. And the same type of data approach on the fire, are the calls getting answered on the fire in a timely manner? Are we having issues getting calls answered? To Jonathan's point of, you know, the statistics around why is there open positions and how do we fill those from a data-driven approach?
Thank you. We will now, I will read the last question before our closing statements. What, and we'll begin with Jonathan Shafto. What will you do to make Andover more environmentally friendly?
That's a good question. I mean, I think we already have a great system of parks and preserves. And I think keeping those is a big piece of it. I mean, we've had water issues in the past, which the council is currently addressing, and getting that cleaned up. I apologize. Can you repeat the question one more time?
Yes. What will you do to make Andover more environmentally friendly?
Yeah. And I think as a city council, I don't know if that's the primary focus we should be focusing on right now. I mean, we have roads and infrastructure that need to go in. We need to focus on public safety. I mean, I would ask residents to really go out there. And I participate in all, like the Arbor Day and the park cleanup. Those are things we need to do as a community. We need to come together as a community and clean, do, participate in those cleanup days and kind of take the personal onus as residents the whole to support the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Sims, what would you do to make Andover more environmentally friendly?
I think we need to review, I was actually talking to one of my neighbors, and they were talking about the idea that we have open, we have green space in Andover that doesn't have access to it. So I think we need to review all of our environmental and park areas and make sure that we can get access to those areas to make them more accessible to neighbors. That same neighbor talked about trying to launch her kayak down on Round Lake Boulevard and that there's, it's really a challenge to get the kayak into Round. So just maintenance on existing properties we have to make them more user-friendly and more ability to access the environmental areas that we have. And I would actually look at, as part of a strategic plan, is there budget dollars that can be put aside each year to, when the opportunity arises, to buy more green space, to set it aside for long-term environmental growth. I know that was a, years ago, that was a thing, and the city did buy some of the different areas we have today as green space. I'd like to see us re-implement that as part of a long-term plan to help increase environmental property in Andover.
Thank you. Scott Schuh, what would you do to make Andover more environmentally friendly?
So it's not just as simple as saying, plant a tree. I have a friend though, who has certainly advocated for that, that as we look at, from a planning and zoning scenario, you know, how do we make more of an access area, trails going through private property? How do you plant more trees on private property? And I would advocate somewhat of what Jeff just said. Well, we have some preserves. We can go ahead and we should be able to figure out a way to add to some of these places and not put the burden on the actual property owners to come up with some of this stuff. But we could also potentially incentivize them to do that on private property. But I'd also advocate for things like an improved recycling and composting. We already do that. But we could do a better job of something like that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now have the candidates make a one-minute closing statement. And I will actually begin by reading Greg's statement. And then we will let the three gentlemen who are here actually have the last word. When, this is from Greg Mueller. When my wife and I moved to Andover in 1997, the realtor we worked with identified Andover as the jewel of the north. The ideal has remained in place, and I commit to serving the needs of an excellent and growing community. A vote for Greg Mueller is a vote for principled and transparent leadership, lower property taxes, and a safe and thriving city. Thank you in advance for your vote. And we will begin with Jeff Sims.
Thanks. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this forum. It's been enlightening to hear what the other candidates have, and hopefully the citizens of Andover have enjoyed this too. If elected, I plan to listen intentionally to what the citizens say and work to make decisions based on that feedback from the current citizens and not be influenced by outside parties such as developers and/or the Met Council. If a topic's presented at city council, I plan to make a decision that's in line with the long-term goals of the city to make sure that we are smooth sailing for years ahead. My four years on the Planning and Zoning Commission helped me to understand how the city planning process works. I want to use that experience along with my 30 years of business and finance background to help keep Andover the unique city that we all enjoy. I ask for your vote on November 5. And for more details, check out my website at sims4andover for Andover@com. And thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you. Scott Schuh?
Thank you to QCTV as well as the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, as well as everyone watching and listening to this forum. I have a servant leader's heart along with experience in the public and private sectors to solve complex problems of government. I sincerely care about people and treat everyone with respect, dignity, and fairness. As a fiscal hawk and advocate for lower taxes, I will be mindful of city expenses and outlays. I will bring a business mindset and a fresh perspective to city governance. I have raised my family and lived in Andover for the last 24 years and feel called to give back to our great community. It is important to strike a balance between preserving the nature of the urban rural environment through thoughtful planning and sustainable economic development while ensuring we do so in a transparent and fiscally responsible way. My name is Scott Schuh, and I would be honored to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Shafto?
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for setting this forum up. And thank you to Andover residents for watching. I wanted to share that as a CPA, one item in our code of conduct is when serving clients, we are to be independent in both fact and appearance. On a personal level, I feel strongly about this value as it relates to elected officials, and adopted it as part of my campaign. This means I've only accepted endorsements from my fellow Andover residents, which can be found on my website. Additionally, I've respectfully declined contributions and endorsements from entities outside of Andover. I want Andover residents to know that I am accountable to only them, because that is who we are serving. My vision for Andover is to ensure that it remains a desirable place to live and raise a family. To accomplish this, we need to ensure the long-term financial health of Andover and support public safety efforts. I respectfully and humbly ask for your vote in November to do just that. For more information, please visit my website at shaftofforandover.com. And I'd love to hear from you if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. The League of Women Voters thanks the candidates for speaking to the voters about issues and for simply running for Andover City Council at large. Remember, you will be able to vote for two for that position. Thanks the viewers and for those who submitted questions. Links to all forums are located at l w v a b c m n dot org. The general election is November 5. Early voting starts September 20. You can vote early at Andover City Hall or the Andover County, excuse me, the Anoka County Elections Office. Please see the City of Andover website for additional information. You can register to vote, update your registration, find information on voting options, and find your polling place on mnvotes.org or the Minnesota Secretary of State website. You can also register or update your registration at the polling places on Election Day. If you're interested in League of Women Voters, visit our website at l w n a b c n m n dot org. Women and men age 16 and older are welcome to join. Your vote is your voice. Make your voice heard by voting in the general election. Thank you very much.